President Kate Ryder. Hadeen Tamasa. Present. Steve Trecker. Present. Evan Weber. Gary Weller. Present. John White.
Present Chair.
Online. Donna Wong. Present Jeff Suckernick. Present. Phil Hicks. Present. We have a forum. Nine members in person, one member remotely. I know Mike Lee will be joining us late. All right, very good. We'll move on to announcements. Our agenda has been modified as part of improving meeting efficiency. We are using a three-minute timer to improve discipline. But no applause? The objective tonight is to start our two presentations not later than 9:00 PM. The Oniava Street Sewer Improvements Project has completed its first phase of work. The cleaning and inspecting of the sewer lines, which was expected to generate the majority of noise as it constituted removing built-up gravel and grit from the sewer line. The second phase, lasting two to four weeks, involves in-office review of the inspection data. The third and final phase will consist of repairing defects identified through the inspection process, and that is going to be imminent. This final phase, expected to begin this month, will require road closures, but is expected to generate less noise than the initial phase as the work will be occurring within the sewer pipe. The final phase will start from Kauanui Street and progress towards Kainui Drive. Information is available at www.onivavasewerproject.com. There will be an update of the Kalapauai Roundabout Project Improvements by city officials on Monday, September 18th, at 6:00 PM at Kailua Intermediate School. For more information on the project, please visit www.kalapauiproject.com. The Second Annual Kailua Fall Festival is on Saturday, September 30th, from 4 until 10:00 PM. Part of Hanani Street will be closed for a night of award-winning musical acts, entertainment, vendors, food, drinks, and fun for the entire family. This is a free event to attend and enjoy. Parking and trolley ride is available from Kainalu Elementary School for a fee. More information can be found at www.kailuevents.com. The 2023 Olamana Christmas Parade is scheduled for Sunday, December 17th, at 2:30, starting at Monoili Elementary School, and will then wind itself through many of the streets of the Olamana community. HPD will help direct traffic that afternoon. I think all these announcements are online and chat. Are there any other announcements this evening? Gary Weller.
Yes, sir. Some new news. We've worked on this for, I don't know, almost 10 years. The space in front of Akahi Shopping Center was a remnant piece of land when they expanded Mukapu and Kanioi Bay Drive, and it has some beautiful monkey pod trees and grass on it, and it was under the control of Facilities Maintenance. And Facilities Maintenance, after negotiating with Estha Ina, myself, and A and B, has given A and B a right of entry, and Alexander and Baldwin are going to take over the maintenance of the park, and we're hoping that this is the first step into getting that to be a mini neighborhood park. And they will take over cutting the grass, because sometimes the city has allowed the grass to get up to my shoulders, and we think this is going to be a good move. Also, they're going to take care of the security in the park and notify the police when homeless start to build camps. So I've waited a very long time for this to happen, and I'm very pleased that it finally got done, and we need to thank Estha Ina and A and B for that. Thank you.
All right. Well, Gary, thank you for spearheading this for these many years. It's a win for A and B. It's a win for the city, and mostly it's a win for our residents, and I really appreciate this breakthrough. And thank you, Esther Keina and Alexander and Baldwin. Travis Council.
Just a friendly reminder to the community that the 40th Annual Honolulu Century Ride will be coming through town on Sunday, September 24th, a large aid station just next door at the intermediate school, timing around 7:00 AM to 2:00 or 3:00 PM. Expect about 1,000 cyclists. It's not a race, and no roads are closed. But yeah, Sunday, September 24th. Thank you.
Okay, any other announcements? Any online? Any in the audience? Okay, mahalo. Next order of business is a board vacancy. This is for the term ending June 30th, 2025, representing Sub District 2, which is Enchanted Lake. Would any board member wish to nominate any candidate for this vacancy? Okay, well, talk to your friends. This will be on our agenda again next month. We'll move on to HPD and HFD reports. We'll start with Honolulu Police Department Representative.
Good evening. I'm Jared Atkins with District 4 Community Policing Team. The stats for the month of August are as follows. Motor vehicle thefts, there was one in August versus 14 the previous month. Burglaries, there were 10 in August versus six the previous month. Thefts, there were 52 in August versus 34 the previous month. Car break-ins, there were eight in August versus six the previous month, and there were zero robberies in August versus zero the previous month. That's all I have for the stats. I can take any questions or concerns.
Okay, questions for Officer Atkins of HPD? Any online? Anyone in the audience, questions for HPD? Yes, Cindy, if you could use the microphone, please.
Thank you. I was wondering if you've been able to identify who keeps firing off fireworks during non-legal hours, because they repeatedly go off somewhere in Enchanted Lake.
No, I'm not aware of that complaint. I can look into it. Is it coming from the same area?
I believe so.
Okay. Have you called 911 for that?
In past, I've been told you have to witness them actually firing it, or prefer them please to do anything.
Yeah, so if you collect, if you can, if you collect video evidence, you can turn that over to police officers. Otherwise, police officers have to see the person doing it to take action. But if it does occur, you can call 911, you know, let them know the area, and an officer will go to the area to check it out.
Thank you.
Do you, do you know like what address it's occurring at, and is it like at nighttime or what?
It's definitely nighttime, and it's probably at least a mile from our home, so I can't read it, but exactly where it is.
Yeah, the best in that instance would be to call 911, and that'll get an officer to go and check the area.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, but that, that serves as an announcement to everybody. If, if there are random fireworks going on in the neighborhood which are causing disturbances as best as possible, determine the location, but call HPD. Gary Weller.
Let me add to that. Fireworks is a good way to start a wildfire, so we should be very alert to this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Officer Atkins. And that note, we'll move on to Honolulu Fire Department.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Board, good evening, citizens. Let's start with a question that was asked last month, and I got the answer right here. So I wasn't here last month, so I'm gonna just paraphrase. I believe the question was, does the HFD intend to charge for the use of helicopter rescue operations? And the answer is, the HFD understands people sometimes make poor choices, but our mission is to respond to all emergencies regardless of who, what, where, or when. We continue to hold our longstanding position and remain concerned about people who may delay or not even call 911 in an emergency. Ultimately, lawmakers will decide whether we need a state law or city ordinance to mandate fees for rescues due to risky or responsible behavior. Now the stats for August. Fires, there were two structure fires, two nuisance fires, one cooking fire, and eight activated alarms, which ended up being no fire at all. Emergencies, there were 104 medical emergencies, one motor vehicle collision involving a pedestrian, 15 motor vehicle crash collisions, one mountain rescue, three ocean rescues, and one hazardous materials incident. And then our safety tip for the month, evacuation planning. In the event of an emergency, be prepared with an evacuation plan. Create your plan with all members of your family and household. Keep in mind those with limited abilities, including children, elderly, and pets. Now I'll take questions.
All right. Mahalo, questions for HFD tonight? Gary Weller.
Hi. The fire department came up to my property a couple of weeks ago to inspect the mountain, and I'm very thankful they came up, and they're gonna probably use my place as a staging point if they have to put out a fire on Kalahia Hillside. But I think the mayor announced this past week that they wanted citizens to take pictures of anything that could cause a wildfire near their houses. You know where the mayor wants those pictures or that information sent to? Do they send it to the fire department or to the mayor's office, or I don't remember where, where they're supposed to respond to?
Good question. What I can tell you now is, I'm, I'm not certain where you would send those pictures, but by next month, we'll get an answer for you. You can always also just take it to the local fire station, I believe. Well, we're right here behind the basketball court, but we got another station in Akahi that, right next, right next to the shopping center. And if you live in Monoili or Olamana area, we got a fire station, Olamana Fire Station that's right near Monoili Elementary.
So this, so the citizens can go there and say, we think we have a potential problem very close to our house by vacant land, and the fire department may take some action there?
Yes. As a matter of fact, a concerned citizen walked up to our station yesterday, earlier this afternoon, and had explained to us, near his home, there was a palm tree, one leaf that was on a power line. So we actually took some action. We, we got in a fire truck, we drove past, we checked it out, and it kinda... It, it was what he said it was, but it wasn't dangerous. It was, there was a half a frown maybe this big, and it was on a telephone line. Now, the, I know the lines that are near the top of the power poles are the high voltage lines. Those are the dangerous ones that will, you don't want anything around those. And I know you can call HECO to have them trim around their lines if you need, if you need them.
All right, thanks. Any other questions? Harold Mioshero.
Hello. I was at a disaster preparedness Kailua Emergency Fair a couple of weeks ago, and one of the questions that arose several times, and it was, of course, post Maui, but does Kailua or Oahu in general have a, a map that shows where there's vulnerabilities in terms of potential wildfires? Which, you know, again, some, it sounds like that, that the city and county is trying to get a little more updated information about that, but is there something that kind of sets at least, you know, provides some information at this point?
I'm, I'm not aware of any map describing what, what you were just asking about. I know everyone's attention is on wildfires because of what happened on Maui. I believe the city is creating these maps, and as soon as they're finished, it will get out to the public.
Yeah, this is kind of important. We, we know that it was published on Maui, that part of Lahaina was high risk and part of Lahaina was an extreme risk. That had been published in advance. Not enough people paid attention to it, but it, it kind of shines a light on all the other islands that, that identifying extreme risk, high risk, medium risk as appropriate, and disseminating that for public awareness and action on the part of landowners, action on the part of the city, being proactive in advance could prevent the fires that bring, bring devastating results. So I'm glad the city is preparing these maps, and we will eagerly anticipate their publication. Thank you. All right, any other questions? HFD Kate Ryder.
Not a question, a point of clarification. Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization is a 501(c) nonprofit, and they, they've, they have on their website a very detailed maps of fire risk in, and if they, it was a project done with, I think UC Berkeley, don't quote me on that, but it's on their website, they do have, and I can get a link to anybody who's interested. I've been researching this, so, yeah. So it's the Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization, HWMO.
All right. Thank you. Hope we'll look at that. Any other questions or comments for HFD? Board members online, John White.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, again, with the, the Maui situation in Lahaina, I don't know if it's hearsay or not, but it's been said that the brothers out there ran out of water to battle the fire. We're installing or potentially about to install a smaller water tank to service Kailua. Is that a concern as far as water supply needed if, in fact, Kalahia Hillside is the driest part in Kailua? I've seen it catch fire in the past. Is that a concern that we're installing a smaller water tank in the event of that happening? Thank you.
If I could just quickly comment, we, we got an update from Board of Water Supply at last month's meeting. They are gonna replace the 2 million gallon reservoir tank with two 1 million gallon tanks, so there won't be any reduction in capacity. It's just that it's a phased replacement. The 2 million gets replaced by 1 million, and then another 1 million goes on the side of the existing tank. At the end of the day, we'll still have 2 million.
Copy that.
Other questions from the audience? Okay, thank you so much. Next item, our local agency reports. Board of Water Supply, all by Marine Corps Base Hawaii. Board of Water Supply, Danny Ornales.
Hi, good evening. Danielle Ornales with the Board of Water Supply. Message from the board for the month of September. So last month in August, we had a total of six water main breaks. Three were a part of the Monoili project on Aloa Road, another on Hualani Street, one on Akahi Loop, and one on Oniava Street. These water mains were all installed in the 1940s and 1950s. It's just related to age and just age of the pipe. And then the message for the month. So the Board of Water will be observing Source Protection Week from September 24th through September 30th. The goal is to bring awareness about the importance of protecting our precious drinking water sources. While Oahu's water purely comes from groundwater resource, here are some basic ways that you can help protect the resource. Conserve and use water efficiently. Check your, your home for leaks and repair regularly. Use only what you need. Please don't waste water. Dispose of any household waste properly. Do not pour it into the ground. And if you're a hiker, we always ask to protect the watershed, stay on legal trails, and respect the wildlife. Also, joining a community watershed partnership group is always good. And we all need to be responsible stewards to ensure that we have adequate water supply, adequate supply of water for safe drinking for today and for future generations. Let's all do our part and make every drop count. For more information, you can always check our BoardOfWaterSupply.com website. Do I have any questions?
Mahalo, Danny, questions for Board of Water Supply? Questions online? Questions from the audience? Travis Council?
Or just a general question for Board of Water Supply regarding scheduled repairs and replacements? I'm thinking specifically about the Aloa Road water main replacement. I'm just curious if Board of Water Supply, and this is probably an ongoing complaint to you, but Board of Water Supply and the city or state coordinate regarding road repaving and repair projects, just so we can avoid situations like we have now where a freshly paved road is being torn up and patched right after, right after it's been repaved. So I imagine both of those were scheduled fairly far out, but it would be great to know if there's coordination between agencies on that.
Okay. Um, I, I'm not sure, I mean, you know, the investigators, I'm sorry, inspectors that are assigned to the, the contractors who are doing the work, I know there is a schedule. I believe it's on our Board of Water Supply site for, you know, the general area they will be working. And of course, whenever there's a damage, and then, you know, repair and then replace, and then, you know, all of that, it's not any fun, but I'll look, I'll look for some more information about that. Our controller will be doing a short presentation later. His name is Joe Cooper, and he knows everything also. He knows everything. He'd be a good resource maybe to pop that question in later. Yeah. But I will, I will look for that, too.
Good reminder. Our presentation later this meeting, the, on Board of Water Supply's proposed five-year water rate increase, and Joe Cooper standing in the back will be presenting that. And Travis, the answer to your question is yes. Yes, there is coordination. The Complete Streets Ordinance passed around 2012 required the city to develop checklists such that whenever there is a significant road work, that, that a whole list of about 20 things on the sidewalks and landscaping and utility upgrades are all part of a checklist so that if there's, if there are multiple actions needed, they can be coordinated in, in one road closure. So yes, coordination exists. Problem is, on the, on the Aloa Road, it failed, and, and we're awaiting results as to what the lessons learned are and how that happened, but yes, there is coordination. It was less than 100% in this case. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Will we?
Thank you, Bill.
To Marine Corps Base Hawaii, Major Jordan Fox.
Good evening. For those of you that I haven't met yet, I'm Colonel Bevan, commanding officer at Marine Corps Base Hawaii. So before I turn it over to Major Fox for tonight's update, I wanted to address a question that came up at last month's board. Unfortunately, I wasn't here, I was on the mainland for the board, but Major Fox does a, a great job of filling me in on the various boards we attend, so rest assured that if you, if you proffer a question or there's an issue, he will come to my attention. So last month, Mr. White brought the question with respect to the ability for the base to open up ball fields, provide access to the local community, take pressure off of either the local schools or from the public areas with respect to ballparks. I, of course, have a number of authorities as the commander, but I'm also limited by federal statute and law in certain respects. So one of the things with respect to non-federal entities is I have to be able to offer similar service to everybody. So the reality is, I, I do have the authority and the ability, and I would love to host individual events, Special Olympics, canoe regatta. In this case, if there's a tournament that we can host, I would love to do it. It would require us, obviously, to have some coordination to make sure that we can deconstruct training, make sure that we've got base access worked out for everybody, but I would absolutely love to, to host a tournament of some kind for the local community, board the base, or our ball field, but I do not have the ability to open it up and provide unfettered access, unfortunately. But I do welcome the opportunity and would love to host something like that, so I, I would encourage anybody who's interested to gain contact with my team, to figure out a date and an occasion by which we can host, and would love to welcome the community board to see the facility and to, to host an event like that. So, so please, don't let this go to, go to rest. Let's figure out how we get an event on the calendar, although we can take advantage.
Mahalo, Colonel Bevan. We appreciate that generous support for hosting tournaments and special events, and I'm sure that there will be some coming your way.
Awesome. That'd be great. If there's no questions for me specifically, I'll turn it over to Major Fox.
Board Member John White, online, who, who had the question last month. Go ahead, John White.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you again, Colonel. We do appreciate the, the open mindset, and I actually have been in contact with the major just the other day in regards to something that we could potentially get going in the future. We'll definitely make sure we give as much lead time as possible. I know logistics to get on the military installations are, are tough, and yeah, we are excited to move forward in the future and incorporate some of that great field space you guys have. Thank you.
That'd be great. Yeah, tough but doable, so I absolutely look forward to working something like that. So if there's anything else for me, make contact.
All right, good evening, everyone. I just want to mention noise real quick. I know on Maikua, there were some, some things about, some noise at the ranges, both at Marine Corps Training Area Bellows and on the Mukapu side at the Ulapau Crater. So in Ulapau, the Marines were shooting rockets, and it started a small fire that was on Maikua as you may have seen, but thankfully, the week prior, we had sprayed some fire retardant along the range for fire prevention measures, so we were able to quickly contain that fire and get it under control and put out. Tony McTab, the School of Entry West, which is an entry-level training venue for young Marines, they were doing some, some evening operations that may have bled into... Marines, they were doing some, some evening operations that may have bled into the evening or the dark hours, and then we're doing some operations to urban terrain at the facility there. And just a quick reminder, the Marine Corps Base has a website where we post all of our noise advisories. I'm not 100% certain if I posted one for this, but I'll be sure to keep that updated, and the link is on the newsletter for everyone to sign up. And the last announcement is that on 31 August, we activated First Low Altitude Air Defense Battalion, which is the headquarters. They will have follow-on batteries focused on air defense for manned and unmanned threats, and they are a unit of First Marine Aircraft Wing, I think we're at Okinawa, Japan. Any questions? That's all we've got.
And the beach at Bellows is back in business. All right.
Sorry, one more thing. I know fire is on everybody's mind right now, and I can't remember if it's in this one's newsletter or not, but some of the noise, your Marine Corps Base Hawaii supported the Maui Water Fire Response, so we sent our C-120 aircraft. We also sent C-130 aircraft that were transporting personnel, Hawaii National Guard, DPAA folks, equipment supplies over there, and a number of folks also responded from the single marine program. I had about 30 or 40 on, on three days down at the Capitol, helping to receive supplies and sort. So fires are on everybody's mind right now. We are also taking a look at our base posture, recognizing that we are all at risk, so we need to respond effectively.
If I recall correctly, part of the plan for the perimeter access fence going up near, not on the ridgeline, but near to the ridgeline, if I remember correctly, part of it was to have a, a, a access pathway which might act as a bit of a fire break. Is that correct?
It does. So in fact, I was up there last Thursday taking a look, because obviously we're going to be moving some sections of the fence that we've already put in and taking a look at how we can minimize the impact of the sightlines, folks. But one of the things that I mentioned to part of my teams, I was standing there, is like, may I look at this fire break that's been created because of the fence line? And yes, some of the places where we are putting a fence, we are now taking a look at increasing access for exactly that reason to combat fires that get to a part where we currently don't have the ability to get after. But yeah, an unintended positive consequence is, boy, there's some natural fire breaks where there weren't before, and it may not be a bad thing, but we need a balance, right?
Mahalo. Are there any questions? Board members first, Jade Lau?
Just wanted to clarify, the range that you're, the range firing you're talking about that was yesterday was also continuing this afternoon, correct? I was gonna say, because there was something going boom when we were out in the ocean at about 4:30 today, so I just want to clarify it was all in the training. No, not fireworks. Well ordained and prepared. Thanks.
Kelly and Kobayashi?
I was just wondering if you could share a bit more about the fire retardant used to suppress the fire?
So it's called Fortify. It's kind of a gel. It's environmentally friendly, and they use it in the state of California, understand, to assist in wildfire prevention. I can give some more like the MSDS sheet or something, if you're looking for those kind of specifics, but.
That's enough information. Thank you.
All right, any questions from our community members? Yes, ma'am. If you could use the microphone, please. That, that microphone is fine.
I just read that there is base closure on Bellows this weekend, 9 through 11 on staff training.
Is that Marine Corps Training Area Bellows, or would that be the Air Force Station?
Air Force Station.
Okay, yeah. I'll, I'll look it up, and now I'll get your answer.
Okay, question or comment from Representative Lisa Martin?
Aloha, everyone. Thank you very much. I did have a question about the fence. I have had constituents asking me about when the part that is planned to be taken down will be taken down, and I just wanted to get some better information for them. And also questions about the new sections going up that have the, the infrastructure to put barbed wire on, which there's no barbed wire on right now. And the question is, will that actually be cut off? The, the extra height, I guess, from the, the attachments that were ordered before the decision not to put barbed wire off? Will that actually be cut off or not? So those are the questions I wanted to pass on.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa. Appreciate it. Yeah, so I was out there last Thursday and walked the section that you and I had walked, whatever it was, weeks earlier. And part of it is, you know, we're not simply cutting off something that was there, but we had to wait for replacement caps to come in. So the section that you and I walked, that previously had the extenders where you would put barbed wire, have, are no longer there, and they have been appropriately capped.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah, no, you bet. We'll do the same for the other section. Part of the delay with the, the section that is currently there that we're going to be removing is, we obviously, because we're having to redesign that fence area, are having to deal with the contractor and, and take a look at, you know, where it's actually going to meet up, and just taking a little time, because that, that level of change requires approval also from NAFAC, and there's a contracting piece of this, because this was budgeted for a certain amount of money that we are quickly reaching the end, and we will be able to do the things that we've previously talked about doing, but we just need to make sure that we are spoking it appropriately. So yes, more to follow, but we, we should be wrapping, based on our conversation with our design folks last week, we should be wrapping it up here in the near future. So hopefully, we'll see action very near the future to start building out the section that we talked about, removing the section that we're going to be taking back down.
Okay, I really appreciate that. People are just worried that it might not happen. The other thing I wanted to mention is I wanted to thank you folks for showing up en masse. We had so many volunteers at the Capitol from the Marine Corps Base, and it was a huge help, and I just really appreciate your effort. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, mahalo, Colonel and Major. Next order of business are resident and community concerns. Anyone has something on your mind? Now's the time. Three minutes, please. Please come to the microphone.
Just wanted to thank you all, Neighborhood Board, for supporting my cause, which is there's some errors in the real property tax process. I really appreciate the letter you sent to Mr. Kiwano. I was expecting today's meeting to have him come and say something, but I made a poster, and my comment to him, since he didn't show up, would be, the silence is deafening. Anyway, I'd like to communicate to him also that facts don't cease to exist just because you ignore them. Anyway, thank you again, Neighborhood Board, for taking on this cause. Residents in my neighborhood appreciate this very much. Thank you.
Mr. Hugh, thank you for your fortitude and dedication to sorting out facts, and you presented a wonderful case study that is something that the department can learn from, and we hope they do, and we'll periodically follow up. Right away. Other, other resident and community concerns. Cindy Turner?
Hello, Cindy Turner here, representing the Kailua Kulu Wetland. I've been here in the past talking about developers who do not properly install their stormwater BMPs as is required by WAO, and spotted a couple more recently, and I brought some pictures to share with you all. This is in Norco, and it's 88,000 square feet. The person has basically cleared it completely. We have reported it to the stormwater people. They don't know if anything's happening yet, but
And a permit would have been required before doing that.
Yeah, there's no permit on this property at all, and they've just cleared.
Cindy, can you explain what a BMP is and the importance of it?
Yes. So BMP means best management practice, and those are things like silt curtains. There's all kinds of very specific things that developers are required to do now because of some new regulations that came in a couple of years ago, and we are continually seeing developers clear land and put none of them in, start without permits. And in one case, I was talking to one of the inspectors about it, and they said, they, once they go out and inspect and find there's a problem, the developer has about 30 days to comply, and then if they don't, then the city goes back and does a few more things. But these developers basically just realize they're not going to get fined. There's no incentive to comply. So anything the board could do to fight and ask that the BMPs get enforced and fines passed would be great. Problem number one. Now, problem number two. This is the city's Department of Facilities Maintenance not following through on keeping their hardened culverts cleared, and I worked with Lavani last year about this time. We surveyed a whole lot of the hardened culverts, lots of documentation. We had a different director back then of Departments of Facilities Maintenance, and she did have to clear it. It was great, but here we are, a year later, we're finding camera, just incredible amounts of Kailekua tossed into the hardened culvert. I don't know by who, but it's the first storm that comes through that's all going to wash into the wetland, down into the pond, and then onto Kailua Bay beach. So it would be great if Department of Facilities Maintenance does their clearing that they really should be doing.
Thanks for that reminder. It's a, it's an integrated system, Alka de Makai, and not getting permits for land clearing, not implementing best management practices that are required on, on all permitted work allows pollutants to enter into the water system that eventually damage in, in the bay. So thank you, Cindy, for monitoring this and bringing it to everyone's attention, and we'll, we'll follow up with getting these pictures where they need to go. Thank you.
Gary, did you have a question for me?
Gary Weller?
When you need your research to see if they had no permits, the city permit section for a grubbing and grading permit is a different section than the normal section. Did you check that section?
Yes, we did.
Okay, and then, if I remember right, that land is zoned to agriculture?
That's correct.
Because one of the, I don't know if they ever did it, but if they got a conservation permit, then they can clear all the land they want as long as they don't touch the ground. So there's equipment out there now to, to just tear down. I'm not saying it's right. I'm just telling you that there's equipment out there now that skids along the ground. It doesn't disturb the ground and wipes out all the vegetation. So I'll, I'll call up the conservation department to make sure they didn't get a conservation permit, because on ag land, they can get exempted as farmers from the city and county grading, grubbing law.
Yeah. It, it looks like a significant amount of dirt has been moved to make the driveway.
Oh, okay.
There, there's like a mountain, a mountain of dirt, but it seems to be new.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, other, Lavani Lipton?
Cindy, thank you. I hope you're coming to the water quality meeting next Thursday. We can take this up there. I know one of the suggestions was to have the city regularly clean the culverts on a, like, time cycle instead of every time we complain, which can be, you know, six-month year intervals, so maybe we can take that up in the committee and take some action. Everyone's invited to the water quality committee. It's here at 6:00 next Thursday.
All right. Thanks for the lead in. Other questions or concerns from residents? Yes, ma'am?
Hi there, good evening. I'm Cosette Arms, and I live in the rooftop house above the monument in Ola'la Point, and my concern is fire, of course, because of the Lahaina situation. What shocked me, or what I, what I noticed that I applied to my situation, is the telephone poles were down, the wires were melted, everything was just wiped out in the infrastructure of electricity, and, and the brush on our hill. I know those of you that are Kailua people, if you drive into Lani Kai, that hill above the monument is just covered with Hailekua this high with grass this high, which has laid itself over, dry, and it appears to be dead, but it's still rooted in the ground. And because of the rain runoff, if we ever get any rain, we can't clear the hillside down to Bear Dirt, because then we'd have the runoff. The hill is really, really steep, and we've been doing it by hand for over a week now, every single day. I've hired people to take the Hailekua away from the house, down at least, while we haven't quite reached the city and county land, which is the base of the hill under all the wires. My concern is if there's a brush fire under the wires, there's a wooden pole that slants toward Lani Kai that, that, that the cable people won't climb because they tap it, it's hollow, it's termite eaten, and that would catch fire so fast. All those wires and all of that fire would go right down onto the road that comes around the point, and it would totally make Lani Kai an island, much less create danger for a wildfire to spread into the neighborhoods. So, and emergency vehicles, you know, would, would block it, too. So that's my concern, but we have three situations happening that would easily cause such a fire. One is the wires themselves. If they were to come down, if that pole was just fully, we had another pole on the Kailua side of that pole that just came down spontaneously. It wasn't windy, there was nothing happening. It just fell over because it had been so rotten. They replaced it with a metal pole. This was several decades ago, and I don't know what the solution is for the poles, because I don't think they can do underground there, but at least that pole needs to be replaced. Electricity could cause the fire in the brush under the wires. The other thing is fireworks. We have a real big problem with that. Almost every weekend, the kids that party in the, I know my time is up, but kids that party down at the boat ramp and the pullout by the bus stop send up aerial fireworks, which then spray the hill with sparks, and the hill is dry, as you know. And the third thing is homeless camps down below the monument have cooking fires, and so there's smoke and a lot of fire activity there. So those are my concerns. I'm open to have people help me figure out where to go from here as a citizen. Thanks.
Mahalo. Residents of Lani Kai really should be thinking of what alternative egress routes might be, including on foot, to the golf course, to Enchanted Lake. Maybe there's a way to Bellows, but if, if vehicular access is clogged, be thinking of other, other ways to exit the neighborhood. All right, any other concerns this evening?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Claudine.
Claudine, yes.
Her point is well taken, not only for Lani Kai, but I think the rest of Kailua. And in regards to what Gary Weller mentioned about identifying your vulnerable spots, when you create a multi-hazard mitigation plan, that's part of the effort. You identify vulnerabilities. At first, it was flooding, tsunamis, now it's wildfire. So I think we all have to take a look, maybe combining two committees, our Public Safety, Public Health, and Public Health, Transportation, because you're locked in in Lani Kai. You know that, yeah? You're going to have to escape up towards Enchanted Lake or something like that. Yeah. So this is something that needs to be discussed and not put aside under the table. Maybe work with our elected officials and our agencies too. Thank you.
Excellent point. Travis Council?
Just to follow on to that and kind of add on to HFD's report earlier, the Honolulu 311 app as well as website, just a monthly plug for that. There is, I just looked, a debris or other concerns on that. So if you had a fire concern, safety or other issues, down telephones, polls, et cetera, you can report on that app or the website, Honolulu 311. Even if it's a state concern, they'll relay it over to the state agency.
Thank you, Travis. Yes, ma'am, in the back.
Cynrex, a Coconut Grove resident. I just want to make sure the neighborhood board is aware of a crosswalk situation. I'm pretty diligent about reading the meeting minutes, and I haven't seen it in the meeting minutes. So the crosswalk in Kalapaua off Kenehe and Kailua Road is almost non-existent, the one going Malcolm Kai. So I think we need to get that addressed because it's heavily utilized. You can hardly see it at all times, too. Okay. So just want to make sure that we get that somewhere on an agenda in the future. And then there was a report on KHON on the 31st of August saying that unfortunately tonight, there was going to be some kind of demonstration given by, I guess, the city and county and perhaps a partner that they have about the affordable housing on Kiupai Place. Obviously, that's not on the agenda, and I don't think that's happening tonight.
It is happening tonight. It is on the agenda. It's a presentation.
Okay, great. Excellent. All right, that's it. Well under my three minutes.
All right. City property acquisition, Kiupai Street to support affordable housing. Kevin Auger, the Office of Housing Deputy Director. And that'll be more or less about 9:00 p.m.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure.
Phil? I just want to add on that there are two actual crosswalks that are at issue. There's the crosswalk that goes Kenehe to Hamakua, which is where our hazard light is anyway. And the second one is the crosswalk from Central Pacific Bank to BW or Power Yoga, that corner. That crosswalk, both of those are heavily utilized, and both of them are really hard to see because they're just faded, weathered and faded. So, yeah, it's both. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other concerns this evening? Yes, ma'am, in the back.
To add on to safety crosswalks, there should be a left arrow at that Kalapaua Market, Kailua Town to left to Pudan. Everybody waits there forever, and there's no left arrow. That's another good thing to do.
Yes, we passed a resolution two years ago, about two years ago, I think, requesting left turn signals there. We have received some feedback that doesn't qualify by their normal standards. However, there's also a lot of testimony from people who work on that corner that get to look out the window and witness what's going on, that it's hazardous as people attempt to make the left turn. So we have, we passed a resolution requesting it periodically. We ping, and we still view it as an outstanding item.
My second thing that I wanted to add is that we may need more things for Kiki to do and family outside. And I would like to propose a bike pump trap, a bicycle park, a legal bicycle park. I can propose pictures and all that next time. But there's several different areas that I have seen. I don't know that's not being taken care of or empty a lot of the time. And one is the safety to help clear out for the brush fires. I know they clear a big area where that helicopter remote control, a polycory. There's an area cleared out to the right, to the left, to the back. There's a lot of brush, dry brush still yet that we can just, if we could even have a, make a pathway. It's just a pathway with some pumps in it for kids to go and do a pump trap. If you don't know what a pump trap is, it's really simple. It's less than, we can do it less than an acre. There's a place behind Kalapaua that the kids did for two weeks during the Christmas break. They got the police called on them. They're literally, I was told that's called now the bird park. It should not be a bird park. We should get a Kiki off the road, and they should be able to ride bikes safely. Like our signs say there, there's no bikes allowed. I don't know if I, in any of our parks, bikes are not allowed. So they force them out into the road, and they're out to get it for finding now our new speed bumps are putting in, they level those out, they jump in. That's, that's what we want to do with dirt in a safe place to ride in our field. And I'm not talking about we have to take field. I'm talking about outskirts of a field that's overgrown, not being touched, not being taken care of. We have a group of community members that will help take care of that.
Let me refer that to our Parks and Recreation Committee that meets next Thursday at 8:30 right here.
8:30 at night?
Yes. Kate Ryder, if we could open up some space for continuing that discussion. All right. Thank you. Jeff Sukernick?
I was just going to ask this lady who spoke on behalf of the crosswalks, mention it to the mayor's representative.
Thank you. Anything else?
Good evening. I just want to take a moment. I don't think our city council member is online, but I wanted to take a brief moment to thank her for our help with scheduling the meeting on the 18th at 6:00 p.m. with the Department of Transportation Services regarding the Kalapaua project and the construction going on there. But one thing that is abundantly clear to me is that the brush fire in Maui has cast a bit of a tragic pall on the meeting, and it is, seems to be on everyone's mind. And the real question that I have with the board is, is what can we do to effect some sort of change and accountability for the people that should or should not be held responsible and accountable for the complete negligence in advance of the fire as well as the response to the fire? Because what we're hearing now is a lot of questions about accountability, about timelines, who we're going to hold responsible for this. But my question is, or at least my recommendation is, I think this board could pass a resolution, maybe in conjunction with other neighborhood boards, to ask the legislature to convene a independent investigation, separate from anyone else, separate from the federal government, separate from the state, an independent investigation in order to actually find the timeline when the fire could have started, when it could have been put out, when water could have been provided, and/or what roads were closed and/or open. There are a number of questions that remain unanswered, and the elected officials in Maui appear to be negligent in their response. And so I think in order to hold those people accountable and to find best lessons learned for us here, so we can find out what to do with power lines, whether to make them subterranean or just to replace the poles with metal poles, those are all good questions and I think would be a good usage of our time and our money. Thank you.
Mahalo. My understanding is Governor Green has commissioned an independent third-party review. Okay. We'll move on to the next order of business, which are the mayor and governor's reports. We'll start with Mayor Rick Blangiardi as a representative. We have Jim Ireland or Shane Endright?
Hi, everyone. Shane Endright here for, and I have to ask to discuss to you all. The first is Pohakapu Park. We were asked to do some hedge work there, and I was told that it should be completed by this week. The other issue was a no parking sign that was knocked down on North Colahill Avenue. It was closest to the address of 959. That will be replaced when resources are available, but I was asked to make sure that I gave the correct service request number, which is 49259 for those that are interested in that. And the other issue was the bathrooms and the cleanliness of those bathrooms. I am told by Parks that they will begin pressure washing those as soon as tomorrow, with plans to paint the walls and the floors. No timeline on that, but pressure washing should begin tomorrow to the bathrooms at Kailua District Park. And that's all I have unless there's any questions.
All right. Questions for Shane Endright? Donna Wong?
Yeah, hi. What is the project at Pohakapu Park?
Not necessarily a project. We were just asked to cut down the hedges that I believe were blocking a sign, and that is being done, shaping down during this week.
Basic maintenance, then?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Gary Weller? This facility that we're in right now, the flooring material out here is peeling off the concrete, and the Parks Director and the Parks employees have asked the city to repair it 16 times. And now the peeling is getting to the point where it's going to be a trip hazard. So this is kind of like an epoxy sealant on the floor that's separating and peeling. So instead of waiting until somebody sues the city, maybe we can look into recoding this floor as soon as possible. Thank you.
Understood.
All right. Any other questions for Shane Endright? Online? Any audience questions? All right. Mahalo.
Thank you. Good night.
Governor Josh Green's representative, Erin Connor, not able to be with us this evening. We'll move on to elected official reports, starting with Senator Chris Lee. Councilmember Esther Kiaina?
Hi, aloha, Chair. This is Roz McCaula on behalf of Councilmember Kiaina. The council member sends her regrets as she was unable to attend tonight's meeting. I have a quick update, just two items. The first is in regard to the Kalapaua Roundabout Project. It was mentioned earlier, there will be an update meeting on September 18th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Kailua Intermediate School. I will insert more information, or at least a website for more information into the chat box. Also, in regards to the city's affordable housing project at Kiupai Place, thank you, Chair, for mentioning earlier that there will be a presentation on that project tonight. I did want to mention, though, that Kihei and Mapuana de Silva, on behalf of their Evi Kupuna burial organization, Kailua Kaolo Ho'ohilo, reached out to Councilmember Kiaina. The council member is committed to work with the De Silvas as well as the appropriate city officials to address both past and future work needed to sensitively address our Evi Kupuna. And that's the update for tonight. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Roz. Questions for Roz? Gary Weller? Roz, would you thank Esther Aina for me for helping on getting that memo of understanding and right of access over there at Akahi Shopping Center to the park, okay?
Oh, most definitely. Thank you so much, Mr. Weller.
You're welcome. All right. Any other questions? Online? Community questions? Mr. Hugh? Yes, Councilmember Kiaina? Roz, the question concerns our resolution from a month ago noting discrepancies in the assessed land value assessments for 105 parcels in Enchanted Lake on three streets where there were significant discrepancies from neighboring properties. And as a group, the 42 parcels that were lakefront on Enchanted Lake were, the land valuation was assessed to be lower than the properties across the street, not on the lake, which was counterintuitive to real estate people. And the question is, if Councilmember Kiaina is querying the tax department on this, I know that she is looking at resurrecting a city council bill, I think it was three from last year that didn't make it out of committee. But if you could check with Councilmember Kiaina and let us know, we would appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you so much, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Hugh, for the question. I will definitely touch base with the council member and be able to provide an update, either she or I, to you, Chair, or at the next neighborhood board meeting.
Okay. Mahalo. We'll move on to Representative Lisa Martin.
Aloha, everybody. Thank you for being there. I wish I could be there in person. I'm traveling. I just wanted to say thank you for all the Kailua residents that have really stepped up to help Maui. I had numerous requests from professionals who wanted to lend their services and connect to, you know, to organizations that they could help through. Also, we had people coming to help with the Capitol Drive. My office manager, Makiile, who's there in the audience, was really a leader in that effort at the Capitol, helping organize people, organize stuff, get stuff moved to where and sorted. And she certainly had a lot of help from the community. I want to thank you folks. Another thing that happened, as you folks are aware, we organized an event in Waianalo about invasive species. And it was well attended. It was a great event, but I wonder if there's interest in organizing such an event in Kailua. We have had little fire ants in Kailua, particularly in Lani Kai, but also other parts of Kailua. And I wonder if there's an interest in that. If people are interested, please reach out to my office because we would be very happy to organize another event. It's really something that requires community participation to identify pests, and so we can really get to them before they spread. And it is a really big deal. Life on the Big Island has, you know, lifestyle has changed dramatically due to these pests. And they are not so widespread yet that we can't eradicate them, you know, when they pop up in certain spots. So please let me know. I also wanted to mention that, I was hoping Cosette Harms, who came to speak about the fire hazard at Alala Point, the point going into Lani Kai, was going to ask some questions directly of some of the agencies that were here tonight. But I did forward her concerns about the leaning poles to Hiko. And if anybody else has, you know, if there are poles in their neighborhood that seem damaged or leaning or something like that, please let me know because I think Hiko is extremely sensitive to liability issues right now. And it would be good to let them know about any hazards that we identify. And with that, if there's any questions, I'm open.
Questions for Representative Martin? Online? Community questions? I have one. Has there been any follow-up on, from the LNR on the Lani Kai Bowl Box Trail? follow-up on, from the LNR on the Lani Kai Bowl Box Trail? Both the physical upgrades to the trail and also the management of access?
That is a good question. I've been talking to them about that, I think probably the last time was about a month ago. And they, the funds are released, you know, they say we're moving forward. There hasn't been any actual work yet. And in terms of the management of like a reservation system, again, the pieces are moving forward. They needed, one issue is it will be the first trail in the state that has a reservation system. We have parks with reservation systems, so they needed to change their administrative rules to make that legal. And it had to go in front of the Board of Land and Natural Resources to be approved. So they were sending that around internally. But they have funding from HTA for, you know, a human being that could help with attending the trailhead and providing education, et cetera. So I guess the answer is nothing concrete is actually happening yet, but the wheels are turning behind the scenes. And hopefully we'll see some action soon. Nothing's held up.
Okay, well, I take this as encouraging.
Yeah.
You know, it might be a first for a reservation system and maybe a shuttle, shuttle people in from a Kailua storefront area. But it's also a trail in the middle of a residential area, not unlike high school stairs.
You don't have to convince me of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Senator Jared Keho Kaloli.
Hello, good evening everyone. To start off in the chat, in follow-up to Representative Martin's comment, there was a town hall on the Little Fire Ant and Koki Frog infestations in Waianalo earlier last month on the 21st. I spoke about it briefly last month. The Department of Agriculture disclosed what they claim to be a contained population of over 10,000 koki frogs in a Malka site in Waianalo. And a substantial number of little fire ant infestations around Ko'olapoko. So in response to that, specifically from community requests in Kanioe and Kahalou, we organized a town hall on Wednesday, September 20th, which is in two weeks, at Ben Parker Elementary School from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. I and some of the other legislators representing the Kanioe area met today to finalize that. It's going to be a workshop, so why you should pay attention to these ants, why they should be treated differently from other fire ants, why they are just really, really terrible pests for us to have to deal with on the island of Oahu. And what to do about it, how to survey, how to treat, recommended protocols and those things. So that's Wednesday, September 20th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. It'll also be broadcast on Olelo, but we're going to have breakout workshop stations and things. So it's going to be interactive and I'd encourage you to attend. I'd also be happy to help facilitate a further dialogue in Kailua because there are going to be some Kailua specific approaches and concerns to these invasive pest incursions that we probably need a community-specific discussion on. I would also like to second the amazing work of Ma Keile Ishihara from Representative Martin's office. I believe she, I guess, is in the crowd, you know, in the days immediately after the fires broke out on Maui, we were inundated with thousands of items donated from the community that all piled up in the rotunda. And Ma Keile and Kimi Onakane from the Waianalo Neighborhood Board helped get hundreds. At one point, we had over 700 volunteers who just showed up at the Capitol. And that was an immense undertaking to make sure that we had water, refreshments, and a viable plan to figure out how to mobilize everyone, to get all those items appropriately sorted and shipped out and prepared so that they could be of use and help on Maui. It was a really significant undertaking and there was a lot of really good work done. So shout out to Ma Keile. I'm the Chair of the Commerce and Consumer Protection Committee in the Senate, which has jurisdiction over things like insurance, financial institutions, and the Public Utilities Commission, which regulates Hiko. So we are deep in work right now in response to the Maui fires. In particular, the Attorney General's third-party contracted investigation. I'm in the process right now and I'm happy to take comment or feedback from the Board and the community on this. You know, I have some real problems with the Attorney General maintaining supervision over the contractor, even though it's a third party, in part because she has been involved in two different actions relating to these, to water issues that have come up and are quite controversial on Maui in the immediate aftermath of the incident. The state has also been named as a defendant in the first of what are likely to be a number of legal actions assigning blame to, I mean, all of the deep-pocketed large organizations on Maui, the county, the state, Kamakana Schools and Hiko principally. And so there's an inherent, I think, conflict situation here that we're going to have to sort of flesh out and understand. Ultimately, when we talk about Hiko, you know, there is an investigation underway, there is a mandated investigation by law that needs to take place when utilities are involved in accidents that cause deaths. So, you know, the court processes and the investigations are going. It is difficult in the long term to see how ultimately this is not going to affect individual repairs across the state. There are tragic things that happened in that community and the processes to, you know, sort out what happened and assign liability and achieve justice for the people that suffered over there is underway. I'm happy to engage in that discussion as we go forward and I'll just maybe leave it there. And I'm also happy to discuss actions that we probably need to discuss and move forward as it relates to our own wildfire and natural disaster resiliency in Kailua as well. So thank you.
Okay, mahalo. Questions for Senator Keho Kaloli, Donna Wong.
Yeah, the event at Ben Parker on invasive species, does that include Kailua or it's just Kanioe?
All are welcome. That's part of why I would like you all to join us. If you get my emails, there's a QR code and a link attached to register. And then you can ask a question or you can ask questions before that we'll try and get addressed in the presentations. But we'll have, it's a workshop, so we'll have different stations where people can come and interact with the different personnel that are responding to these infestations. Please come, please help us spread the word.
Yeah, there was a town hall in Waianalo August 21st, Ben Parker and Kanioe Wednesday, September 20th at 6:00 PM. And Carol Mioshiro, would you be willing to add this to Public Safety, Public Health, Civil Defense Meeting next Thursday to consider a similar public forum in Kailua? Okay, that's hereby added to the Public Safety, Public Health, Civil Defense Committee agenda for next Thursday. Carrie Weller.
Jared, I talked to your staff. For almost 30 years since business action has started, there was a wonderful website on the state where you could register your business, start your business, fill out all the forms in one location. And the tax office has just exempted themselves from that site. And I was wondering why that is, I asked your staff to look into it. It was very convenient for anyone that was going to start a business to have all their documents in one place and register in one place. And now you have to go over to the state tax office to get your general excise tax license. And that seems to be not in the original thought of having small businesses all go to one site instead of two. And the tax office is not very responsive. So the site was an excellent site to take care of this. So could you look into that for me and find out why, after all this time, the tax office decided to vacate the website?
I will. The new tax director is from Kanioe, he lives by Hawaii Memorial. And the DCCA, which is responsible for business regulation, we've already got a commitment from them to engage in a process to overhaul their website because it's way too complicated and difficult to navigate. So thank you for bringing this up and I will go check with my staff, I was not aware that you reached out.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Okay, mahalo. Move on to Representative Natalia Hussey-Burden.
My lovely office manager Nadia is sharing screen from home. I'll go through this really quickly because I know you guys are timing today. So next, I really want to thank Councilmember Esther Kia Aina, Rep. Lisa Martin and Senator Jared Keho Kaloli for their leadership on the invasive species issues, particularly little fire ant. I just wanted to throw up this map in case nobody has seen it yet. These are the detections that have been noted since June. And as you can see, there's a lot in Kanioe, there's a lot in Lani Kai. There isn't so much in my district kind of in the middle yet, but I do want to let you know that this is only what's been reported so far. So it'd be great if everybody could go home tonight or tomorrow, put a little stick of peanut butter out underneath the tree, check back in a couple of days, see if there's any little fire ants there. And if there are, next, visit stoptheant.org and they will completely take care of that problem for you for free. You can't get any other pest control like that. And it is a very species-specific bait that they use that's non-toxic to pets, to humans, to other kinds of insects and animals. It's really just targeted specifically towards little fire ants. And this is such a huge deal, it really will change our way of life, as Rep. Martin was talking about. It blinds pets, it makes it so you can't sit on the beach and enjoy your time lying out on a blanket, you might get bitten. We won't be able to pick flowers and make lei for our neighbors and friends because there's going to be little fire ants in them. Now is the time to stop them. So on the 14th of last month, the Windward legislators did a site visit of the Hawaii Ant Lab. We also did the Invasive Species Town Hall. If you didn't get a chance to go there, this is the QR code to link to the video, Olelo filmed it. And the entire thing is available on video. It was a really great and productive meeting, the Department of Agriculture Director was there, the DLNR Director was there, a lot of elected officials, a lot of community members. So I look forward to the ongoing discussions at Ben Parker and hopefully we can get one for Kailua as well. Next. Switching gears to the Maui wildfire relief. The state is asking residents like you to open your home. If you have an extra Ohana unit, an extra house, an extra room in your home, the state HHFDC has a fire relief program that will pay you, compensate you for the use of that home, probably for the next year or so until we're able to rebuild the Haina and get these people back into their own homes on Maui. Right now, a lot of survivors are still in hotel rooms. So we're trying to get them into more semi-permanent housing so that they can have a kitchen and really kind of feel more at home until they get to go back to their actual home. My position has been that I have been requesting a special session so that we can deal with the Maui issues and the wildfire prevention separately from our regular session where we deal with green fees and all the other issues that we have to deal with on a yearly basis. Because I really think that they each deserve special time so that one doesn't overshadow the other. The House's position has been, it is premature to call a special session unless we know exactly what we're asking for. So the House has set up these working groups, there are six working groups where we're going to really study and analyze the six different major areas involved. I'm on the wildfire prevention working group, I'm really excited because I think that has a lot of potential statewide impact and potential impact to our community, how we can become more prepared and resilient to a wildfire. We have a draft report coming out on November 1st and a final report coming out on December 15th. Of course, I'll keep you updated. Next, I think I just have one more. Oh, and I'm on the Majority Policy Committee where we're fleshing out the package details of our majority policy package, as well as my own legislative package for next year, I'm already drafting bills. If you have any ideas, please come to me. I only have, House members are only allowed to introduce 10 bills in the second year of the biennium. So I'll be a little bit discerning, but I'm happy to work with you on whatever ideas you've got. Thank you, that's all.
Okay, mahalo, questions, Levani Lipton.
Thank you. Natalia, I've heard rumblings about plans for Poly Palms. So I wanted to know if you are aware of any future plans. They're under lease with A and B. And I've heard some kind of talk about potential plans for hotels for that space. So I just wanted to know, like, you know, if anyone knows what's on the docket or what is the plan for that property? Parts of it are very dilapidated and beginning to fall apart, parking structure underneath. But I just wanted to know, I mean, I think it's about four years away, but what will become of that space? There's a lot of doctors and other kinds of offices there.
So thank you, Levani, this is actually the first that I'm hearing about that. I will definitely be following up on that tomorrow and I'll hopefully have an update for you by next month.
Jade Lau.
Since we're asking you, Natalia, does anybody have any idea what's happening with the Atherton preschool site? Because Atherton had their last day of preschool August 24th, 25th, 26th, somewhere in that last week. And I've had several people contact me and say, oh no, they're going to tear it down and build a private building. And my response to that is, if they are, we in the neighborhood haven't heard anything of that site.
I haven't heard anything about that either, but I'll follow up on that as well, thank you. Thank you.
Jeff Suckert. I think this is more of a comment. You mentioned that you're going to become much more involved in wildland firefighting mitigation and that's great. But we knew in 2018 that was a problem with gross omission by the Mayor of Maui at that time. And, and I don't know how to say this over here, but we've been asking for tsunami warning signs and we've been asking for shelter, we have no shelters in the area. Are we going to have to wait until an actual emergency kills thousands of people in Kailua before our government actually does something about it? Is it just pure reactionary government we have right now?
So as a member of the Majority Policy Committee, I brought up disaster preparedness in our meeting that happened a week before the Maui fires and I was the only one who voted for that as a priority. I also, as a staffer, helped organize wildfire awareness presentations for the legislature and haiteima awareness presentations for the legislature long before I got in office. And the reaction at that time by a legislator who has since been arrested for bribery and is no longer in office, but the reaction at that time was, nobody cares until after a big event happens. And I and the other legislators in the room were like, this is, it's your job to care, like this is who should care. So I am doing my best to bring that to the Majority Policy Committee, to make that a policy priority for the entire legislature next session. I probably won't be introducing any personal bills on it because it's more likely to pass if it's in the majority policy package. But that is one of the things on the wildfire prevention committee that I will be pushing for, not just for wildfires. But, I mean, we prepared for most disasters in a lot of the same ways. So really, any form of disaster preparedness is something that I'm going to be fighting for this next session. Thank you.
There used to be eight designated hurricane shelters in Kailua, now there are zero. This was a result of assessments done in 2020 and 2021. Because assessments were done that caused those eight to be delisted. Those assessments also undoubtedly specify what the deficiencies were. And it would be reasonable to deduce that you could sort through deficiencies that are major and expensive, deficiencies that are minor and more easily correctable, which ought to be the high priorities to get us shelters back. We've written a letter asking Hawaii Emergency Management Authority to tell us the plan and and give that priority based on level of effort required. Appreciate your efforts on the CIP funding to insert that.
Can I just add on to that real quick? For the last five years, I've been trying to pass a bill that I call the Puerto Rico Bill. In the 1990s, Puerto Rico had a really bad set of hurricanes. That, after that, they passed a law saying that all new public buildings have to be cap four rated or higher. And I've been trying to pass that bill for five years, and it has not been getting a hearing. So I'm going to try again next year. Hopefully, this time they'll actually pass it.
Mr. Chair, can I just interject with what you're saying?
Bhadi Jumasi.
Quickly, Natasha, you know where we're coming from. But the rest of your legislators that are on screen, please make sure that you check with Hawaii EMA and have them utilize the funds to retrofit shelters in Kailua. We have no shelters at all for hurricanes, please.
Barry Weller.
What are they doing on the women's prison? And when will it open up? And will possibly, since my committee and you and some others attempted to get better camera systems in there, are they going to do a tour of the prison when it's finished? I would like to join you in visiting.
Yeah, I am setting up a tour of the Women's Correctional Facilities. They do have a new warden who is a female and who is much more sensitive to the needs for camera issues there. Our bill that we worked on together died, but it's because the Public Safety Director said that they're already, they already have funding through, it was some federal funding to upgrade cameras systems, not just at WCC, but WCCC, but all of the prisons statewide.
It's not, you know, the cameras and stuff are fine, but there should be some kind of procedure, you know, like when police departments across the country started to get the body cameras, people started to realize that all they had to do was turn them off or take the chip out of it, or somebody could tangle with it. So in a situation at the women's prison that occurred a while ago, I would like to be assured that the data of monitoring would not be able to be tampered with.
That was why I wanted the bill to pass also in addition to the funding because the bill had an element of liability in it. If the cameras were off or not working, that would have held people accountable.
Okay, any other questions? Mahalo.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, one question. Amber Granite.
Mahalo, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to know what the accountability is for them saying that they have the funds, but have they carried it out yet? Like, who are they? Are they accountable to anybody to carry that out, saying that we don't need your bill? We have the money, we can do it?
That's a really good question. I don't have an exact update, although it is, they're definitely accountable to us, and I will be holding them accountable and make sure that those are, at least in the process by the end of the year, if not completed by the end of the year. I'll check on that, and I'll report back next time. Thanks, Amber.
Thank you.
Amber, help me write the bill. Thank you.
All right, mahalo. Next up is Representative Scott Madiyoshi. Next is Nicole Gray on behalf of U.S. Representative Joel Tuta. All right, next order of business are reports from members who attended other meetings. Travis Council.
Just a report that I attended, and I serve on the Community Advisory Committee for the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization. We received a great report last, or just yesterday, regarding the city's active transportation monitors, or ATMs. These are much like the little markings you drive over on the highways and roads that measure volume of traffic, but we have them on bike paths and sidewalks. Specifically in Kailua, there's two different locations. One, just on Kailua Road, just across the park here, and one up closer to the Lani'kai marker. And they're actively counting, the ones on Kailua Road's just bicycles, but the one by the Lani'kai marker is bike and pedestrian. This is just an important data collection that the city can use in future decisions and maintenance and other plans. So just wanted to alert you that those are here, and it's very similar to the data that's been collected for 50 years plus at the car level, but just more at the person level of this. I'll include that in the Transportation Committee next Thursday. I'll have the report.
Excellent, thank you. Any other reports? All right, next order of business are presentations. We have two presentations this evening. First is from Board of Water Supply, and second is from the Office of Housing. Board of Water Supply proposed five-year water rate increases. We have Joe Cooper, the Water Works Controller.
Good evening, Chair, board members. I'm Joe Cooper, I'm Water Works Controller. Oh, sir? I'm Joe Cooper, I'm the Water Works Controller. I guess I'll thank Daniel for his role when he referenced, but I know everything, but I'm far from it. However, we do have the Program Director of our Water Resources Committee in between the two of us. We hope to be able to answer and serve people in my path. Thank you. So I'm here to discuss, first, I'm here to discuss our five-year water rate proposal. And this is important, I think that we all know. Water is important, water is life. Water is important for all life. And so it's probably one of the most important resources we have. Next slide, please. We have a very large and complex water system, water infrastructure to support water throughout and distribute water throughout the island. It has multiple wells and shafts and reservoirs. And we provide about 145 million gallons of water per day to the people of Kailua. We also provide water for fire hydrants, for fire suppression, et cetera, and agricultural purposes. Next slide, please. Yes, it's important to note that the Board of Water Supply is a semi-autonomous agency. We receive no other taxpayer funding. So your property taxes don't go to support the water bill. We derive all our revenues from the customers that provide water. So it's important that we maintain our water system. And to do that, we need to provide, you know, to the customer appropriately for the amount of water they use. Also, when you get the water bill for everyone at least in Kailua and Kani'ohi, you're also getting, also included on the bill is the sewer bill. That has nothing to do with the Board of Water Supply. I'm only talking about the water portion, which is generally on the left-hand side of the bill, not the sewer portion. And we just build that. It's a courtesy to the City Department of ENB. And they determine their own waste water. So generally, just to give you a breakdown of where the dollar goes for your water bill, we have, starting on the topic line, top-wise, we have our capital improvement program and debt service. I'm going to combine those two. Those are where we get funding to, like I said, maintain the water system, to replace reservoirs, to replace pipelines, to build new facilities, et cetera. And that consists of about 27% of our budget. We also have employee salaries and benefits, which is about 30% of our budget. And then we have operations and maintenance. A lot of that would be the repair of main brakes and the normal maintenance and upkeep of our pumping systems, et cetera. And then up at the top in green, I mean, 12% actually goes to pay for electricity and power costs. Whenever we have pumps, we have pump water up from the ground, and we also pump water up to higher elevations to reservoirs, provide wire pressure to more elevated communities. And so in 2024, our budget to provide all these services to the Board, to our customers with Board of Water Supply is about $276 million. Next slide, please. Our last rate increase was in 2018, when we did a five-year rate increase. And we just wanted to demonstrate some of the projects that your money provided for that. And we've completed almost, or we are undertaking almost 500 projects at a cost of almost $770 million. Next slide, please. So things have changed a lot from the last time we looked at our water rates in 2018. A lot of that has been spurred by COVID. And I think that has changed a lot of our minds in many ways, some of which we're still, I mean, grips with. It did actually change the water use patterns. And so it changed the analysis of how we tried to allocate costs, to be fair. Next slide, please. And because of all the other issues, supply chain issues, inflation, et cetera, we've had to deal with a lot of inflation over the last five years. And if you look on the green line on the top, shows the inflation over the last five years, which has been roughly about 20%. Again, five years ago, when we had our rate plan, which is an orange line in the middle, we have, our rates have increased about 12% over the last five years. And so the difference between how much prices have gone up and how much our rates have gone up leaves us at a deficit of about 8% over that period of time. And so now we're looking forward. No one knows what the future rates will be or what the future inflation will be. But we need to project that, and we need to try to plan to budget to provide the services. Next slide, please. And obviously, one of our major costs is power and electricity, which I noted before. And then looking at this slide, on the top, you see some purple lines. And this is, on average, this is our kilowatt hours, the amount of power we're using on an hourly basis. And in general, our total kilowatt hours have been trending down. They go up and down depending on the season, depending on when it's dry and hot, we're pumping more water, using more electricity. When it's rainy, we're using less. But in general, we've taken a lot of steps, such as installing energy-efficient fixtures, PB panels, et cetera, to try to control our electrical cost usage. However, if you look on, in the middle, the green line is the cost per kilowatt hour. It's consistently gone up over the same period of time. And so in general, even though we've controlled the amount of electricity we're using, our cost for electricity has gone up. And they've gone up. Our cost last year was about $33 million for electricity alone. And that's probably about 20% over what we had budgeted. So our electricity costs have gone up even faster than the normal cost of inflation. Next slide, please. And of course, we have Red Hill. Red Hill has been an ongoing battle that I know we've been, the Board of Water Supply has been in the forefront in bringing this issue to the public and to the Navy since 2014, when we were aware of one of the first major spills. We're trying to be proactive in addressing this. And one of the ways we're doing this is obviously we've shut down several wells. This has caused us to have to go to, look to other sources to provide water to make up for those losses of wealth. And also, we're starting to install monitoring exploratory wells to monitor the flow of potential contaminants in the water tables and also to look for new sources in case we're not able to remediate our existing, not below the shaft. And so at this point, we really don't know what the ultimate cost of the Red Hill issue will be. And truthfully, we haven't really expended many costs on that. I mean, like I said, monitoring wells, we've probably spent $5 or $6 million to develop some monitoring well. But potentially, there are much greater costs in the future. Next slide, please. Meanwhile, the Board of Water Supply is taking and has been taking as many efforts as it can to try to control our internal costs. And I and Barry and the other division heads, who do our annual budget every year, are acutely aware that we keep getting hammered to cut our costs. And so we're doing as much as we can to cut and control our costs. We're deferring, where possible, we defer projects. Again, you know, some of these are capital improvement projects that have been on the books or have been under studies and design for several years. It can take quite a few years to get a well up or to design a treatment plant or even to rebuild or replace a pipeline. So where we can, we defer some of those costs. And we defer buying new vehicles. And we, as much as we can, try to defer it and again, control our costs. Basically, our budget for 2024 is a flat budget. Basically, we're supposed to make up, be able to, obviously, regardless of inflation, we're supposed to be able to maintain the services on with the same budget that we had in prior year. Next slide, please. And so ultimately, this is a balancing act. We need to invest in our infrastructure. We need to keep our services and our quality of water up. And we also need to try to keep costs affordable for our customers as much as possible. And so there's no easy way to do this. There's no perfect way to do this. It is a balancing act of, you know, what can we defer and what can we not defer? And what must we really do to be able to provide safe, independent water to the community? Next slide, please. This is kind of a breakdown of where our capital improvement monies go. And if you start on the left-hand side, you can see that, you know, the section in the middle, I guess that's the yellow, yellow or orange section, is really our source replacement. So, and this is one of the things that has changed, I guess because of Red Hill, is that we're devoting more of our resources to developing and monitoring and finding new sources of water. And so in the near term, that is becoming a major driver in our costs. And if we go further out over the next five years, you can see that the log area in the top, I guess that's the red or maroon color, that is pipeline replacement. We have about 2,100 miles of pipeline. Our goal and the national standard is to replace 21 miles of pipeline a year. That's 1%, which means that on average, our pipelines are replaced every 100 years. I know that they reported on, some of the pipelines that broke recently were 40 or 50 years old. So that's an admirable goal we have. We have kind of reduced that. But again, we are trying to build back up to a goal of replacing 21 miles of pipeline. And also, you can see the green over on the far right, where we're also starting to budget again out in six, five or six years, some reservoir replacement. Next slide, please. In general, when we analyze our costs and our rates and try to effectively distribute those costs, we do what's called a cost of service study. We analyze how much cost provide water in general for the cost of water. And in general, single-family residents are paying about 95% of the cost that it takes us to deliver them a gallon of water. Multifamily residents pay 100% of their cost. And agricultural customers generally get a subsidized rate because of a community value because of a community value that we want to support affordable or sustainable food production on the island as much as possible. The difference is made up by our non-residential customers, which pay a little bit more than their cost of service at about 117%. Over time, we do hope to bridge or narrow some of these gaps. But we have narrowed them since our last rate study in 2018. Next slide, please. This is, this is a summary of our proposed water rates over the next six years. In January, and I believe it's being pushed back to February now, we anticipate a 10% rise in our, in our water rate, followed by another 10% increase in July of next year. That will be followed by a 9% increase, then eight and a half percent increase, and then 8% increases that will follow in two years. And again, this is to help us maintain our capital improvement program, to maintain infrastructure and to maintain operations and maintenance. We do plan to have increases in actually, ever since, well, certainly, ever since our 2018 water rate increase, you know, our goal is to have small incremental increases every year. These are a little bit larger than we've had in the past. Last year, we have 4% rate increase. But again, because of inflation, we have to be a little more aggressive going forward. Next slide, please. Again, I briefly told, talked to you about the cost of service of the different types of customers. This again is a diagram of those different types of customers. All of these customer classes, in general, will see the same rate increase. So we're basically raising all customer classes 10%. Residential, residential customers, both single-family and multifamily, have tiered rates. And agricultural also have tiered rates. So there's some variability in what each customer may actually receive. Next slide, please. This, I just to briefly explain what a tiered rate is. On the single-family customers, we, the first 2,000 gallons of usage is charged at $4.46 per thousand gallons. And so this is what we call our essential needs tier. So this assures that, that a household can use 2,000 gallons of water and actually below our costs to provide that water. And all our customers, all our single-family residential customers and all our multifamily residential customers also get this single fam, and our agricultural customers, I guess, unless they should, all share this, get this reduced rate under cost for the first 2,000 gallons of water they use. As a customer uses more and more water, the rate goes up higher and higher. So that someone who's using 6,000 gallons of water, that additional 4,000 gallon is being charged 5.25. And then if you go up to over 30,000 gallons, it's up to 9.25 per thousand gallon. 30,000 gallons is about three times the average household consumption of water, not water. Next slide, please. And so even though I said each, each customer class will get the same rate increase of about 10% starting in January or February, our essential needs tier, we're going to limit it to 2.5% increase. And again, this is below cost. About 10% of our customers fall into this category, who use 2%, or who use 2,000 gallons of water or less a month. Next slide, please. And so this is just to, this is just to give you some comparisons about our current water rates and where the water rates will be at the end of six years. So again, on the left-hand side, you see tier one, which is the essential needs tier. Currently, the consumption rate is $4.46. At the end of six years, it will be up to $5.17 per thousand gallon. If you go, as you go up further to the right, and as your consumption goes up, we're, I guess, geometrically increasing the rates. So that, so that if you go to the far right and then tier four, those people using over 30,000 gallons of water a month will be charged a much higher rate. Currently, it's $9.25. At the end of five years, it will be just over $18. So almost a 50% increase of, excuse me, 100% increase. For the portion over 30,000 gallons, again, they still get to the advantage of the essential needs tier at the reduced rate and all of the other tiers until they get to that over 30,000 gallon. Next, and one of the reasons for this is to actually encourage conservation. We want them to, give them a positive incentive or a negative incentive to use less water and by charge the more, we hope they'll be able to do that. Next slide, too. That's hard for me to say because I'm the finance guy and I like revenue and telling people to use less water, they might get less revenue. But I give my hats off to the water resources people who say we need more water, more than revenue. So I fully support that. This is just an example of our proposed rates over the next five years. And again, I didn't specify it completely at first. We have actually two rates. I've been talking about the consumption rate. We'll also get to where we have a monthly charge. But this is just the consumption rates. And again, if you look across to consume the central needs tier up on top, currently, it's $4.46. On January or February, it will go up to $4.57. And then up like in July or 2028, it will go up to $5.17. And if you go down, again, to the other, other tiers, you can see how they're rising each year over the next several years. Next slide, please. This is a brief explanation of how we calculate water. Again, I said it was divided into tiers. So this is assuming a three-quarter inch meter, I'm using, a customer using 8,500 gallons of water. The first thing is, we drop the 500. We only, we're only counting thousands, we're only measuring thousands of gallons. So we're going to charge this person for using 8,000 gallons of water. The first 2,000 gallons are going to be at 4.46, because that's essential needs tier. The next 4,000 gallons are going to be at 5.5. And then the next 2,000 gallons are going to be at 5.5. And if you multiply those out by the, by the current water rate, you come up with those amounts on the right-hand side in the blue. Then if you go down at the bottom, we do have a monthly service charge. And this is to pay for the maintenance and upkeep of the water meters and our meter reading staff and equipment. And again, for a three-quarter inch meter, which is what, 99% of residential customers have, that is $12.09. You add that up and then you come up with a monthly bill of $53.71. Next slide, please. Again, this is our, these are our monthly service charges by meter size. And again, up on top, most people have either five-inch or three-quarter inch meters. And again, are currently paying $12.09 a month for that meter. That will go up in January or February to $13.30. And by 2028, go up to just over $20. Again, all these rates are like going up at 10%. Next year, 10% in January, in July, and then down to 9%, eight and a half percent, 8% et cetera. So they're all being consistently applied across all, all meter sizes. But then if you look down at the large 12-inch meters, which would be an industrial customer, perhaps on the one up, I think that's really on the long. I think they might have several of these. Their current meter charge is $598 a month. That will go up to $658 a month in January or February, and then up to $999 a month in six years. Next slide, please. We wanted to give you an example of what this means to you. I know I talked a lot about some of the details. So these are some of our proposed water rates or what water bills. Again, this is a sample bill for an essential needs customer. This is someone who's using 2,000 gallons of water. Obviously, if they use less than 2,000 gallons of water, it could actually be less than that. But currently, their bill is $21, just over $21. In January or February, that will go up to $22.44. That's an increase of about a dollar forty-three. And then over the, and then in July, it will go up to $24, another increase of about a dollar fifty-six cents. Those increases in total with those, the consumption fee and the monthly service cost are just over 66%. And then if you go out to July 2028, as you can see, it's gone up to $30.53. Next slide, please. Our average customer uses about 9,000 gallons of water a month. That means, and so this is a sample of their bill. Currently, they're paying just over $59 a month. In January, that will go up to $65, which is just under 10% or just 9.3%. And then at the end of six, at the end of six years, in 2028, it will go up to $97.86. Next slide, please.
Joe, if I could ask you to step up the pace just a notch.
Is the high, is the high-water user, they use a lot of water. They'll go up from $228 to $413 in five years. Next slide, please. A multifamily, again, I'll just, they all get the same benefit of all the different tiers. And those rates go up for these. Next slide, please. And this is a sample water bill. Actually, it depends on the number of dwelling units. So some people have been concerned, if we have 200 dwelling units, how do we get our essential needs tier? We apply those by, based on the number of dwelling units they have. So if you have 200 dwelling units, you get 400,000 gallons of water for essential needs. Next slide, please. Again, non-residential customers are paying over their cost of service and that cost will go up 10%. Next slide, please. And this is just a sample of our non-residential rates. Next slide, please. I think it is important when we establish these rates that we have a kind of, they call it advisory group, which tried to evaluate our community values. And part of that was that the non-residential customers, part of their contribution to the community values, that they pay a little more to subsidize some of the other use of the water bottles. Next slide, please. And some of those are, we do have some continuing lower rate. Again, I mentioned that for lower rates for local agriculture. And we also have lower rates for recycled water because that helps them serve our potable water. Next slide, please. We also have certain fee waivers. Some of those are for affordable housing and homeless housing. And we can waive some of their impact fees or water service facility charges. We also have a waiver for fire sprinkler, red hot, you know, apartment building. Next slide, please. We have a new waiver which we're considering. We got a million dollars from the state to build a new well. I mean, we're going to use, allocate that million dollars to help waive the water service facility charges and insulation charges for new farmers. Again, to try to encourage sustainable agriculture on the water. Next slide, please. We also try to encourage water conservation, have several water conservation programs that are available. Next slide, please. So here's our general schedule. We started this process about 18 months ago. And now we're down at the bottom on the, next to the last bar, which is soliciting public input and presenting our draft to different community groups. We want to get your input. We'll be presenting all this input to our board in our next several board meetings. And we hope to be, we hope that they will be able to act and approve our rate proposal if they're in November board meeting. And that will give us time to program our computers and hopefully begin delivering, implementing our new rate schedule early next year. Next slide, please. And so like I said, we're encouraging the community to give us input. We have several methods where you can provide us input. You can write us a letter, you can call us on the phone, you can go to our website and provide information on our website. We're also on Twitter and Facebook. And you can leave, I guess, that slide up if anybody wants to copy down that, that information. Thank you very much.
Malo, Joe, I suspect there might be a question. Steve Trucker.
Hi. I represent in my sub-district a lot of people who are seniors and a lot of people who have lived on fixed incomes. And you said that because of inflation, the water supply had to be more aggressive in rate increases. But the Federal Reserve is now proposing and hoping that if the current rate of inflation is 3%, they're hoping to get it down to 2%. And for the next five years, you've got increases of, in the next year, 13.7%. Years after that, around, around 6% for single-family residential essential rate users and almost 8% for median, median users. And the average users, it's almost, it's between 8 and 9%. It just seems crazy. The water, water supply is proposing these rates of increases in light of what's going on with the inflation right now and, and what people can afford. I just, I just don't see how people are going to, if I hear you have rates doubling almost, I don't see how people are going to be able to afford this.
Thank you, and yet, we're sensitive to that. And we, we try to make our rates as affordable as possible. And yes, we do, we do rack our brains over that. I guess, you know, part of the issue is, by keeping rates lower now, our infrastructure will suffer and we'll have to pay mortgage on that infrastructure later. And that's kind of the balancing act that we're trying to go through.
Stella, if I could ask you to stop sharing the screen. And, Joe, I'd just like to ask a question. You stuck with the five-year plan for the last five years. It fell short of inflation. Your, your rate has fallen 8% behind your cost increase. You've fallen below 1% pipe replacement per year, which probably leads to more emergent repairs. You've got Red Hill, extraordinary costs. So you're more aggressive on the rate increases, even so it might take you two years of your proposed rate increases before you're even with 2018 in terms of getting back what you've lost to inflation recently. If, if, as Steve Trucker says, if, if the Fed and federal policy keeps inflation significantly lower than, than your rate of increases, is it possible to amend these rate increases later on in the five-year cycle so that they're less aggressive if, if, if the rate of inflation doesn't require it to be that aggressive?
Well, I, I don't close the door on anything, yes, anything is possible. And some of the things that, I mean, we have fallen, we have fallen behind in some of our capital improvement plans and getting some of those out. And so we are trying to, yes, as you mentioned, catch up on some of those in addition to just the normal operations and maintenance. So yes, we, we are trying to catch up to that. I would love the Federal Reserve to get inflation down to 2%. I guess I'm not holding my breath on that, but we'll, we'll see what that is. And yes, our, our, many of our contracts or awards or budgets have been coming considerably higher than the original budget. And yes, we have, are dealing with a lot of other unanticipated costs. One thing that we have had and we've been restrained in doing is we haven't quite passed on any of these energy costs. And we do have provisions in our rate schedule that if energy costs and in our proposed rate schedule, we are trying to maintain a cap on energy costs and not let them go too far out the road. But theoretically, if energy costs goes up, we can even add certain premiums to that. But to answer your question, I can't, if, if costs, if inflation dropped down to 2%, we could, the board could consider a more charge on future rates.
Gary Wellen. I have a couple of questions. The first one is the most important. What's your plan B if Hawaiian Electric goes bankrupt because of the 17 lawyers that are suing Hawaiian Electric and our cost of a kilowatt goes entirely insane? That's number one. How old are your pumping motors? Because in today's world, motors are way more efficient than they were 25, 30, 40 years ago. And my last question is, that, that 2,000 gallons that you talk about there, if I have a house and it has two people in it, that's 1,000 gallons per person. But what if I have one of these local family houses here where my children can't afford to move anywhere, and I got five to 10 people living in the house? Shouldn't they have five to 10 people times the 2,000 gallons? So maybe your equation says... So maybe your equations there are unfair to some people. So those are my three questions I'd like to be answered.
What was the first question again?
First question, what are you going to do? What is your plan B on Hawaiian Electric?
I'm not, I'm not sure we, Barry, do you know if we have, I'm not sure we have a plan B on Hawaiian Electric. I'm not, I, I, I think that would be a catastrophic thing if the state of Hawaii. I will let Barry answer. Barry, our water resources manager, he's more capable to talk about pumps.
Thank you.
Good question, Mr. Weller. Nice to see you again.
All right, other questions?
You know, like PG&E is some, you know, wildflowers in California. PG&E went bankrupt, but they still were able to compete to provide power because the community would, it would be kind of strong, right? So they would have to still do that. Their rates did increase up there. So we see a scenario where it would increase. We just have to deal with depending on how much it gets. And hopefully it will. But they're fighting the lawsuits, so we'll see how that goes. Really good question. In terms of the water life, it's about 10 years. So every time you replace it, it's more efficient. Been trying to get, as Joe was showing you in the park, uses going down because of water conservation, to its efficiency, some of the PVs that we put in the area of our facilities. So that helps. That's a very good question, but. Okay.
I mean, and no, we struggle with that, too. The question is, I, I have a multi-family, a multi-generational house. It has 10 people living in it. We've struggled with that, is how we can do that. And actually, programming in the essential needs tier and the tiered rate structure is the best solution we can come up to. As, there are, I know, some other assistance programs that have been in place due to the pandemic. And I know that we're actively involved in some of those to provide people rent and be charged. But we just haven't been able to come up with a system to specifically address that affordability issue.
But we do have a conservation program, a rebate program called Water Sensible Sana website. So what I would suggest for those multi-generational families is look at ways to put in water-efficient toilets, rebate that rain barrels, showerheads. We'd have a residential and a commercial rebate program. The rates are designed so that we encourage conservation. So they don't want to, you want to control your ability to use less water. The Water Sensible Program gives you opportunities and tools to use less. So hopefully that offsets.
Travis Council.
My, my question just goes back to kind of the funding source. And maybe you can answer, you might not know this, but I'm curious if it's consistent across all utility providers, whether that's ECO or sewer or other places in the U.S. that, that they are fully funded by the rate payers? Is that consistent? Or has BWS looked at other, either taxes or other subsidies of covering costs in that?
No, there can be. There's no, there's not necessarily any consistency in that across the country. It would depend on each water agency. No, not necessarily. I mean, have a look at different water agencies to help them fund it. It's just the way the water supply, if they're autonomous, we don't get any help from the city. So we just, and I think that that is, tends to be more true water agency. But it's not 100%.
Jayla.
Actually, I have a question and a comment. The comment is, when Dani reported about the broken water mains, I just want to clarify. She said those water mains were made, were installed in the 40s and the 50s. So that would make them 70 and 80 years old. So based on what you said, about 100-year life, it's about on target. Isn't that all of our water lines on island? And then my real question here is, you mentioned that COVID-19 caused changes in water use patterns. Can you give us an example of how the pattern has changed? Because you really didn't address how it changed.
Good question. So our, as we replace, we're only replacing a couple of miles a year now because our focus is on new sources to make up for it. So the emphasis has shifted. So not so much on the main replacements. And the prices are going sky high, so it's going to take us time. So we have a fairly good field operations that repairs these things one day. Usually, sometimes it takes more, depending on how big it is and stuff. But, you know, it's a continuous challenge. One of the things we're doing is trying to detect leaks through the satellite detection technology that we can identify a leak before, before it breaks. So we're doing about maybe 10 to 15 of those per year. But our main rigs are still over 300 range there. Terms of COVID, what happened was then during that 2020 period, a lot of the tourists, they swiped his water again. And it shifted from, like it did to, people stay home. So people sort of shifted. And it kind of stayed there like that. But I think the main point of that slide is that because of COVID, Joe talked about supply chain issues and really the influx of federal funding also increased the inflation rates. Everything got really expensive really quick. So we can do, basically doing, able to do less though with the current funding. So that's how it kind of changed. You see it in your commodities and oil and eggs and mortgages. So they tried to take inflation down by raising mortgage rates. Yeah, there's this economic effects.
So the pattern change wasn't necessarily just usage. It was sort of across the board of every economic as well. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. We've gone 42 minutes and we have another presentation. So if, if anyone has remaining questions, email them to me. I will forward them to Joe and we'll, we'll get those answers. Thank you very much. It was very informative.
Appreciate the questions. And our board will be visiting the rates in October, November board meetings. So that's another way you can make matters to them. It's the decision on this race or what have you been reporting.
Okay. Mahalo.
In our board meeting, you're open to the.
Okay, our other presentation this evening is city property acquisition on Kiapai Street. I think that might actually be Kiapai Court. And I'm sorry, Kiapai Place to support affordable housing. And we have Kevin Auger, the Deputy Director of the Office of Housing. Aloha, Kevin.
Hello, Chair. Well, our board, well, our committee members. Thanks for softening up the crowd with the rate increases. Not so much a presentation, but just a, an update. The city's pleased to inform the community that we recently acquired on August 31st, 735 Kiapai Place. Before I continue, I just want to acknowledge that I'm joined by Sasha, Asha Smith, a colleague of ours in Division of Land Management. She's running the slide deck for us. And I'm actually standing in for Catherine Tashner, who's the Director of Division of Land Management, who is the point person for the acquisition. Next slide, please, Asha. Kiapai Place is located in the cul-de-sac. It's approximately a half acre site. It's owned A2, medium density. It was formerly occupied by, I think, a two-story, nine or 10-unit apartment complex. And it's been vacant and dormant for the last 15 or 20 years, a very long period of time. The exciting part about the acquisition for the city is that we're basically taking over a pre-approved apartment development. So hopefully we can get this to production very quickly. Next slide. So some of the benefits and the project goals, activating a vacant land site to get that community activated. I heard somebody mention something about crosswalk. I'm, I'm not the crosswalk guy, but I'll certainly follow up with the city. Obviously, the community needs much-needed, affordable housing. And the sale of the project, the acquisition price included not only the land, but it included a full set, completed set of construction drawings for the project. And that's very important to us because that construction set was, it's gone through an environmental assessment. It's been approved by SHIPTI, that's the Division of Historic Preservation. It came with an architectural inventory survey. It's been completed and approved by, by SHIPTI. It came with a burial plan. It's been approved by SHIPTI and the Oahu Burial Council. And it came with an archaeological monitoring plan, which is very important to us going forward. Next slide, Asha. So the proposed development of the existing construction drawing is anticipate a four-story apartment building, 42 apartments. I think there's, next slide we'll discuss this, but there's, it's 42 apartment units and 58 parking spaces. Next slide, Asha. It is three, two-bedroom units. And the balance of 39 units are all single one bedrooms. Next slide, Asha. We've got a number of next steps. We're going to be back here to see the board. We've got a public hearing that will, that will take place. We've got to go to city council for approval. And the most important aspect of the development is securing a development partner. So we'll be going out to the public with a request for proposals from developers. And we anticipate getting that out, hopefully sometime in the first quarter of 2024. Before we go on and conclude, over the last week or so, since we acquired the property, we received a number of questions from the community. And they're important questions to answer. The first one that we received and a council member, Kia Ina's representative touched on that, is that there were EV component discovered on the site. There were two individuals that were discovered. Those individuals were re-interred with proper ceremony. However, they need a secure landscaped permanent location, very near, if not where they were found. That's not been completed yet. In addition, during the discovery period, another individual was located during the construction of a retaining wall to the rear of the site. That individual's been secured in place. But we need a complete burial plan for that individual, and that's not been completed. We just wanted to make clear to the community that the city intends to fully honor those obligations. That's key. The second question that we got is, will we be pursuing the existing plan that's been approved? And the answer to that is categorically yes. Because EV component located on site, the previous developers had worked with the archaeological consultants and the SHIPTI to investigate the existing footprint of the site. So there was trenching work that was done, very sensitive trenching work that was done to not only excavate, to ensure that the footprint of the building, there were no additional discoveries, but that the lateral lines coming in, the elevator pits were also trenched to be certain that there was nothing there. So it's very, very important. In effect, the AIS or the Architectural Inventory Survey that was approved requires that we remain within that footprint, that existing footprint. And if we go outside of it, or if another developer decides it wants to go outside of it, that's going to start the process all over again. And I don't think anybody wants to see that. So as a condition of our request for proposals from developers, we'll be making a requirement that they follow that existing footprint. Another question that we received was, will we be following the community's sustainability plan to allow Poco Community Sustainability Plan? And the answer to that question is categorically yes. So I'm just here to convey that. And I think that the last question that we received, which was an important one, is would the city be submitting the project to the governor's office under the emergency proclamation for housing and submitting it to the Building on Batteries Working Group? And the answer to that is categorically no. We have no intention of doing that. So we'll be back once we get our RFP drafted. Once we've got more information, we're still getting our arms around the site. It's only been a week, but we're here just to let you know I'm giving updates on.
Okay. Donna Wong.
Yes, the project has an approved SMAP. You, can you use the existing SMAP?
That's our understanding, yeah. That's what I'm saying. Again, we're still getting.
You're not going to be required to get a new one or?
Yeah, the question has come up. We, you know, we've had that discussion. The existing, I think the AIS was done, it was completed in 2018. So the question is, is it still valid? What's the shelf life on that? Has anything changed since then? And we'll be investigating that.
Okay, so the SMAP that was approved, it has a five-foot setback from the Hawaiian Lake Canal. So will that still be honored?
Oh, absolutely. Whatever was previously approved will be honored.
Okay.
Kate Brighter, did you have a question?
Um, yeah, just confirming that the best construction practices will be, you know, that, that will be updated as well.
So I, I heard the, the comments and I took conspicuous notes and that will be included in our RFP.
Jayla.
You made the comment that there is an existing building on that property?
There was.
Okay, there is not now.
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure we weren't confusing the Wailepo project.
I went out there before the meeting to confirm. There are no buildings.
Got it. Thank you.
Gary Weller.
Couple of things. The city owns the land behind that tax map key. And then there's the stream. You're not going to combine your city land with that property?
No, sir.
Okay. And then the wall that we requested the last guy to do. We, we want no runoff to be able to go out into that stream off of that property.
Understood.
Okay, so that means no gate, no pokers through the wall, completely contained property. And that would be on two sides. The sides on, on Kailua Town's, well, sort of Kentucky Fried Chicken side and the backside. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, so I went out this evening to, you know, before the meeting because I wanted to confirm that retaining wall that's been installed. It's CMU block, it's about three feet high. It's my understanding that there's a berm that's also required to be placed there so that there's no additional runoff. That's a great question to bring up at the next board meeting when we come back to see it.
Okay. So then, a couple of other things. Lighting on the building. Normally, a building of this type, that would be apartments, would have lighting all the way around the building for safety reasons or whatever. But you have to remember that we have these very precious birds to us in the marsh. So I want to make sure that those lights are, you know, lights that are not going to shine into the marsh or change the light above the development. Next was parking. So even though it's low-income housing and, you know, we're not quite sure how many cars people will have, you're providing basically one parking stall per unit. But if a family has two cars, then that neighborhood has absolutely no parking on the street. So that, that's a question that's been my concern.
Yep.
And then the next one is possibly because of that, if there is 100 cars that'll come out of that situation, there possibly should be a crosswalk and a traffic light where that enters the main street out there along with crosswalk lights and et cetera.
Yeah. Can I try to take those? Not necessarily in the same order. But the great thing in terms of the existing development plan is right across the street, there's a four-story building with people inside. When I went to the site, one of the things that I was sensitive to is there are a lot of kids in that neighborhood. And it's a very narrow entry. We're going to have to deal with that somehow. So that's, that's a note of mine that we'll have to address. In terms of the lighting, that's already been addressed as part of the EA. So the Newells, Petrels, et cetera, you know, the, and particularly during construction, that's all going to be addressed. The street lamps have to face down. So lighting is, is addressed in the EA.
Now, the poor folks on that neighborhood that have visited over the time period that the developer originally acquired the property to now has, has had to look at a disastrous old dust cloth falling down, people dumping on the property, homeless living there. So I'm hoping that you'll put in the RFP that the construction workers that build this project will not use the on-street parking or park their equipment on the street because they've already been through enough torture on that block.
It was another thing I noted when I went out to the site, that the approach to that site is really narrow. So when we start laying footings, construction, concrete trucks are going to be coming in and out. We're going to have to control that carefully. The existing condition of the site wasn't so great. It's been overgrown for many, many, many years. I get back to the office tomorrow. Hopefully, we can find a way to address that earlier. The condition of that barrier around the perimeter of the property is really in bad shape. We'll see if we can do something about that as well. My pleasure. Just one thing to note, that was the other thing I wanted to remember. It's not low-income housing. It's affordable housing. These units will be available to folks who earn 80% of the area median income and below.
That was going to be my question. What we're, what we've seen in other proposals is 30%, 40%, 60%, 80% AMI guaranteed for 61 years. Would there be similar longevity?
So low-income housing tax credit program developments are developed specifically for 30% to 60% AMI. Anything below 30, there's no, there's no program for that. That's public housing. 80% to 120%, that's a gap area. That's workforce housing. That's everybody. That's you. That's me. That's the guys, nurses, the teachers. We're trying to address that population. The challenge with it is that there are no federal programs to do that. So that's all going to be developed with gap financing.
Okay, but something like a 61-year?
The intention is, you know, we'd like to have them affordable to perpetuity if we could. But it'll be under, when we reach out to a development partner, the intention would be to engage in a partnership with a development partner where they build, operate, run the building, and we provide them a grounds with very specific conditions for the development.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
Just following up a little bit more on what Gary was talking about, I would be interested to know what are the measures that will be taken for stormwater runoff, not just during construction, but post-construction?
It's a great question.
What are the plans? Like, I've already noticed all along Oniava, there's so many storm drains that are clogged. And, you know, so when you do this, are there going to be additional storm drains? Are they going to direct the water flow, you know?
It's a really good question.
Just curious to know. That area is known for flooding, so.
It's in a flood plan. As part of the, as part of the permit package, the approval package, the BMPs are pre-conditions, and you've got to comply with those. And the great thing here is you've got city sponsorship. So if it's not being complied with, that's going to be an issue. We're not far along enough yet with respect to the building process or the engineering of all that, but this is a very sensitive site. It's right on well, so we're going to have to address it for sure.
Donna Wong.
Is this a 201H?
It's not, not presently.
Are you, when you put it up, right here, are you going to ask, is it going to be a 201H? Or are you going to leave that up to?
Only had, only had the asset for a week and so have not had those discussions yet. So that will be a topic that we engage.
Okay, so I maybe missed your answer to Bill. When he's talking about how many years is the city anticipating that this will stay affordable?
At least, at least 30 to 60 is definitely the window, but I don't have to fit it for you tonight.
So you don't, but that's going to be written into your RFP?
It sure does. And the RFP has not been written. That's the point.
Okay. So anywhere.
Putting that back together.
Okay.
We just acquired the asset last week.
Okay, thank you.
Travis Council.
Just a further comment on the parking concerns. I've seen that expressed several places. Just one suggestion within the RFP and just in the plans is to provide secure bike parking, not just bicycle racks, but a secure place, either locked or common code for the residents. Largely because that's a huge barrier of wanting to, it's an excellent situation where it's close to Kailua Town, close to bike, bus routes. So car ownership should not be necessary in this housing. So providing secure bike parking would be a removal of a barrier to people having a.
I mean, I agree. It's just a phenomenal location and certainly within walking distance. And that would be a great thing to bring up when we come back and do the community engagement process to both those points. The existing plan is for the parking to go underneath the building and it's raised up on a podium because there's a flood. So you build two bricks with one stone.
Grant Nakaya.
Aloha, Grant Nakaya from the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, a public policy advocate. I'm attending virtually. I just had a question regarding the environmental assessment that was performed on this site. You said that that was a previously done environmental assessment by the previous property owner, is that correct?
That's correct.
Could you clarify when that EA was performed?
It's a good question. Alani, would you know, by any chance? Everybody knows.
I think it's about, I think it was about, does the board responded to it? It's 2017 or 2018.
That's, that sounds right. I just downloaded it yesterday and read through it and I don't recall the date on it. Does that answer your question, Grant?
It does, but I do have a follow-up question to that.
Sure.
Which is, given that the city has just acquired this property last week, will the city be considering performing a revised supplemental EA to, just to double check that everything's on the up and up?
Everything's on the up. So we, the intention, as of today, the intention is to build based on the approved plan, which would be included in the RFP. So to the extent that the scope would not change, I'm not certain it would be necessary to update the EA. The EA is certainly within an appropriate shelf life to continue the project. But it's a great question. And as we continue to do our own due diligence, as we go forward, as we put the RFP together, that'll be something to be addressed.
Thank you.
Other questions? Members of the audience? Yes, ma'am. If you could use a microphone, please.
Do some due diligence and update that environmental assessment to include the SMP permit that was previously provided to the former landowner. Do we know why the previous landowner that developed the plans, why that project was approved? And so that might be something at least for the community to take a look at as they imagine. Yeah, that'd be great.
Hello, my name is Alania. My name is Alania Pio, and I'm a spokesperson for the Kailua Cultural Design Group, Kailua Ka'oa Ho'wilo. I was engaged in the project with the previous developers. What I was told was they lost finance.
So there, that question, of course, I'd certainly like to see the city update some of the environmental assessment work that was previously done. Conditions are not necessarily exactly the same as when that document was most likely written, which is probably 2016, if it was finalized in 2017 or 2018. And I hope that the city in county has some decent plans or ideas for the construction period and parking related to the actual contractors. As you know, you went down that street earlier. You can basically only get one car down there at a time. I can't possibly imagine what it's going to be like for large trucks going up and down that street. And obviously, there is no parking for contractors during the day. So I would imagine something off-site is going to be in the works. That will be addressed, that will be well-known, and something will be available to local community members when we notice that there are people that aren't following those parking rules. Looking forward to, I guess, the next hearing on it.
Thanks for your comments. I agree, it's a tight site. There's no question.
All right, I don't see any other questions. Kevin, our process is to get a full presentation to a board upfront. It increases community awareness, checks a box for PPP and other projects and efficient for everybody. However, we also put it on our planning zoning and environment committee agenda for any follow-up questions or discussions. And they meet their Tuesday of the month. I don't know if anybody needs to be present.
Probably, I don't know at this point. It depends upon whether the avenue or the way that the city proceeds is whether you're going to go with a 201H, which is a whole different ballgame, or if you're going to update the EA or update the SMP. You know, if it goes straight like it is, then pretty much the board has weighed in with their comments on the EA. But it depends upon what the city.
They're all really good points, and they're all really good observations. We, you know, will create conditions in the RFP that the city would like to see. But it could be the successful bidder for the project besides to update the EA for its own purposes, for its own potential liability or what have you. Yep, to your point, Chair Hicks acquired the asset a week ago. We're here to, you know, we're still working on the due diligence. We'll be back, we'll certainly be back to see it.
Okay, if I could summarize, this is an initial engagement.
Indeed.
Where, where, and the entire community is aware. It's zoned for apartments. It fits within the building height and no variances that we're aware of. There are plans that have previously gone through the whole process and are approved. And your intent is to faithfully use the existing plans. So a few changes and I'll just offer a personal comment that, that, you know, we're excited to have affordable housing in Kailua. It's very difficult to find an apartment of $1,500 or a house $3,000. And for kids that grew up in Kailua, the ability to stay in Kailua other than living with their parents as they start their careers is very challenging. The affordable housing that we used to have on Kailua Road was demolished in 2008 for new condominiums that did not have any AMI stipulations attached to them. So we're short on affordable housing. And this looks like a plan that checks all the boxes. And so we're, we're eager to follow this up, but good start.
As are we. Thanks very much, Chair Hicks.
Okay.
One more question.
All right, one more.
I thought I summarized.
Go ahead, Gary.
Would it be possible for the city, before you publish the RFP, that you give this board the courtesy of seeing it before it becomes reality? Maybe in a draft form?
So I'll answer that two ways. I think the intention is to come back to you before we go out with the RFP. But I'm not certain that we can share the actual RFP before we launch the procurement. I'm not the procurement guy, so I don't know the answer to that. But we'll certainly get that answer for you. Thank you. My pleasure.
All right. Mahalo.
For the opportunity.
Okay. Next item is the approval of minutes, the August 3 regular meeting minutes, which everyone was provided a copy. Are there any corrections, additions? Hearing none, the August 3 regular meeting minutes are approved. Committee reports. I'll note that we have three new committee chairs. Public Safety, Public Health, Civil Defense, Carol Miyashiro. Transportation and Public Works, Travis Council. And Parks and Recreation, Kate Ryder. Mahalo. Any committee chairs wish to amplify any of their reports? Otherwise, reports will stand as presented. Many reports stand as presented. Committee membership motions. One committee that is very short is Parks and Recreation as the former chair and another member.
Is that a comment on my height or the committee size?
So, yeah, we have Kate Ryder and Alani Lipton is on the committee. And I encourage transportation committee members who meet right before to consider. Are there any members who would like to join Parks and Recreation Committee? I would like to join. Are there any others?
Bill, I'll join.
Travis Council, Carol Miyashiro, Mike Lee. All right. Okay, well, I approve chairs, Kate Ryder, but the board approves membership. So I'll entertain a motion to add Bill Hicks, Travis Council, Carol Miyashiro, Mike Lee. Did I miss anyone? To the, Claudine Tomasa? Need someone to make that motion. To the Parks and Recreation Committee. Yes, I'll entertain a motion. Moved by Gary Weller, seconded by Jade Lau. Any discussion? Are there any objections to these additions to the Parks and Recreation Committee? Hearing none, motion is approved. Are there any other changes to committee memberships? Okay, seeing none. We move on to Chair's report. Committee agendas for October are due to me by Sunday, September 24th. Final comments? This meeting is adjourned at 9:50.